Evening. At this time, I'd like to call the work session of Kansas Board of Public Utilities of November the sixth to order. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Brennaman.
Here.
Haley. Weiss.
Here.
Vanny Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. At this time, I had asked for approval of the amended work session agenda.
This is Rose. So moved.
Wait a second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Roll call, Brennaman.
Hi.
Haley. Weiss.
Hi.
Vanny Henry.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Board update, general manager update. Does any of the board members have a date about share anything?
I went to the economic development finance meeting. There were several proposals with the gaming commission. There was a item that was not passed or was sent back to committee regarding their amendment. Something that I guess we'll have to look at at our next meeting.
But you also have your head.
Have the update.
The update, okay.
I don't know what the name of the if it's a committee, if it's a task force, I have no idea what it's called. Economic redevelopment something. Commissioner Seitz pointed me to that and we had our first meeting. Seems like a couple of weeks ago. I really can't remember and I apologize. Trying to look up the date. And the focus of that group seems to be focusing on not only economic redevelopment east six thirty-five, but specifically with respect to the Quinero Ruins area and the call point.
We also see, I also went to the Public Works Standing Committee. And they asked, would I be placing Rose? And I said, no. So they said, would you be willing to sit? And Rose's place, I said, or in the place of the person BPU represented. I said, sure. And so I called Rose and wrote about that. But I think, I think it's very important that BPU has a representative, especially when we hear that they're talking about having us work with Public Works for whatever they're considering under this current administration.
What do you mean exactly? Work with them?
Oh, remember when we did that meeting, but admission, that was suggesting, hey, that we possibly do some work with Public Works, some collaboration with Public Works.
Oh, okay.
And so we do have a place on the Public Works Standing Committee. Which I think they probably wouldn't have made that suggestion if they considered that. But we have nobody representing the BPU on the Public Works at the current time.
I believe that's a mayor appointment for that committee.
And the mayor reached out.
And I've got a little history on that. Rose was appointed and she later, you know, she was too busy with all the other things that she was doing. So she resigned from that committee. I got a call from Irene Cardillo, the chief of staff. And she was going to call me back in, you know, two weeks. And I've never gotten another call from her. So that's just, so it's just set there vacant. So. I, you know.
Thank you. Yeah, they did reach out. So they do want, want someone from BPU represented on, on, on the committee, however. Now, like we're all strapped for time and trying to determine, we'll take the time to do that. It's, it's, it's something.
It's again, as Andy said, that's a mayor's, the mayor's point. So he's going to have to, you know, either.
Well, once upon a time, I, I know that we, we did work with Public Works frequently. I don't know that it was a set time, but I can remember on different projects.
I was on.
Collaboration was not that committee, just collaboration with the two.
When Holland was, was mayor, he appointed me to this standing committee, the Public Works Standing Committee. And I served on it for, oh, I don't know, a couple of years. We meet, they meet once a month on a Monday night. And the mayor took me off. The new mayor. And so.
So on the operations side, especially with the street department, our crews coordinated a lot of, especially the water department, coordinated by Public Works inside the, with Public Works Street Department.
That's what I thought.
So they're doing street improvements, you know, we'll use that as an opportunity to address some of our infrastructure. If we have infrastructure needs, we'll let them know. They may adjust their schedule for street maintenance to allow us to do that. So we're not making street improvements. We're in there tearing it up and have to redo it. So that, that's been for some time.
If you're interested in serving on the committee, I'll get back with Irene and.
I mean, that would be two standing committees that I, that I would serve on. I mean, I would, I would definitely consider since, you know, they both meet on Monday evenings, but I do think it's very important that we have someone serving on that committee. I don't know how, what type of conflict event is that going to be for the board.
If there's anybody else that would. My schedule's about topped out at this point. I figured that. I think I've mentioned it to Senator Haley and he was not there.
But the only problem for me really is, is just January through April. And that's what happened with ED and that even now with development finances, it gets a little, little strained at that time of year. But if between now and then, well, you know, I sort of, you know.
Yeah. So.
Um, I guess you guys will have to answer your, you can answer, but you know, give us some thought on follow up to the joint meeting. You want me to reach out, do anything, or just wait for their, they reach out to us to reschedule or? How do you want to go about?
Can we? Can we take, you know, it, take the ball and run with it and we just, you know, give them a couple of dates and say, you know?
I mean, the board has the right to set meetings and invite others to it. So, or this board does.
Was there some work, Rose, that you, there was some talk at some point of having input into what a permanent structure would look like. I'm assuming that hasn't taken off here.
Well, Phil, I don't know if you had gotten any other interest from any other board member in participating in that.
No, not, not from the full board. So.
Okay.
But you can.
Sure, sure. I'll do that.
If we, um.
On the, on putting a permanent structure in?
No.
Right. The different thing.
I said I would help with like the language.
Right. Oh, great.
Willing to help with that, but I'm not an expert with that, but.
You know how to read, write.
I'd be willing to do that.
Great. Super. And.
But it will be like lawyer speak. Be like teacher speak.
All right. You've got a lawyer.
I guess there's two options. It's one, open it up to the board or go back to the policy committee. Because this is maybe somewhat of an extension or just open it up for all the board. I mean, it's really.
Well, that one was to collaborate with commissioners.
Right.
To develop language, which is fine by me, but.
I do think the commissioners are interested in having that, put that in the BPU portion of the charter ordinance. And I know Commissioner Ramirez especially is interested in moving that forward. So he might be the appropriate party to contact for that, for that. Now, if you want to invite people, you know, there's nothing prohibiting this from inviting people to the meetings or arranging meetings.
So were they thinking quarterly? Was that your?
I believe so.
Opinion?
I mean, look, I, this started with a text message after two meetings ago.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then I've talked to a couple of other commissioners about sort of the sub. I don't, just group is all I'm going to call it. Not going to call it a committee, not going to call it a task force, not going to call it anything at this point. I think it's imperative that, I know that Commissioner Bynum right now, her sister passed away and so she's, she's got some family commitments right now, but I'm confident that Commissioner Hill, yourself, me, at least one other commissioner, Brett, I'm hoping you'll join us to just meet and, you know, sort of sketch this out and see if we can come up with what we think are some viable solutions. You know, that, that maybe we get to a point, obviously we didn't, nobody wants to violate coma with that. And so we would take a subgroup of, of folks from there, a subgroup of folks from here. Put our heads together, sketch this out. But I'm, I'm, I'm no longer going to, no longer going to wait for for the mayor to, to reconvene that meeting in May. Not waiting for it anymore.
If it ever happens.
It won't happen. So.
That's why, that's why, that's why I started.
That's right.
If you want it, want to, want to be to start anything or the board want to initiate something or just how are you want to move forward?
Well, I mean, I, I think this is very informal at this point. I don't think this is something that, and, and if we get to the point where this is more formal, or we think we're even budding up against anything, you know, from a coma perspective, obviously, you know, we'd reach out to you, Angie, or the legal department and, you know, talk through where we're at in things. And if we need to start noticing these meetings, happy to do that. I understand not every task force that's going on right now in the city is noticed. And I understand not every task force that's been developed is, is open to the public. So we don't want this to be in silence or, or behind closed doors. But some of us just kind of want to roll up our sleeves and just start.
And it's sort of, so if the, if it's an official task force or committee and the appointments, you know, and the appointments are made by the board, by an elected official, and then there are elected officials on it, then it is an open meeting. But if it is a very informal, hey, I'm going to go to this. Let's not have more than three of us there. And, and those need to be the same three. It can't be the sun-dress, rotating three. But if it's, I think then that would not be a violation.
Well, and I, I think that there's an interest on their side to add one. And, and I, I'm hoping there's an interest on our side to add one.
Okay, so.
How many meetings are we talking, we're talking about?
Oh, that's, that's a whole different meeting.
I mean.
The, the joint meeting between the full, you know, and here's the deal, and we talked about this before, right? With them, with us. What can we get done with?
We can't.
You know, ten and six.
Right.
You know, with no direction, right?
Now, that's always been Andrew Davis's point, I think, but.
Well, and it's, it's a good point. I mean, let's, let's have some goals set. And but if, but if people don't start at least trying to get together and talk through some of this, see where they're at, see where we might have common ground on some things. I don't know how we move forward.
I.
And I believe that the commissioners want to move, the majority of the commissioners want to move.
Necessary for communicating and for what we are and where we are. I just don't know, Angela would have to tell, what does it take? If we got this formulated and did add it to the
Then I think that the, the BPU would have an opportunity to create its own formal committee, formal task force, where we invite the commissioners that we've been working.
Okay.
I meant that proposal.
That way we have an opportunity to just move forward. We're not waiting on anyone else.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, I, and again, I know that they're interested in participating. So.
So these, these informal discussions really set the stage for something else later.
Hope so.
Okay, so the change in the charter or addition to the charter is not a worry at this point.
Oh, I, I mean, you mean setting the, like the formal quarterly meetings? I think that's a separate issue.
Okay.
So I think that still is going on in parallel. And then I think, you know, to the extent waiting for that language to get developed, if we want to, you know, if BPU wants to set, you know, or invite the commissioners, you know, for a quarterly meeting, maybe the beginning of next year, then we just proceed with doing that. Because I don't think that violates anything either.
Okay. All right, Zach.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me, too.
Our quarterly meeting that you're talking, that you're, you're talking about, is that, that's separate from the quarterly meeting that we used to have with the mayor and, and the administrator and.
It could or could not be.
Are they the same, the same quarterly meeting? Is it a different quarterly meeting?
I think it's a replacement quarterly meeting, Tom, because we're not getting them. And I don't mean, no disrespect to the commissioners, they're not the ones setting it. So.
So the old quarterly meetings were actually set by the mayor. And general manager, county administrator, and the mayor worked on the agenda. But you guys have seen my efforts to try to get that restarted.
And I would rather, I mean.
Take the ball and.
You guys are used to, you two are the ones that are most used to what those quarterly meetings look like. I think I was part of one. And of course, the, the larger joint meeting last July, which seemed to work because there was some collaboration on the agenda for that. As we saw from the last meeting, there was no collaboration on the agenda.
Well, those quarterly, the old ones where the president and the at large, those agendas were sometimes both entities setting.
Right.
You know, what was important to us, what was important to them.
Sure.
So I think that's the way we're used to do it. And then just those meetings with Public Works and it would always be whoever over here is concerned. And then some people from Public Works.
So my advice is to get back and you want either some new format or old format, if you're going to, if you're going to do it. I think the most important thing is just get back in a, in a habit of meetings.
Yeah.
However, however that format, whatever that structure looks like.
In the absence of the initiative that it took from the UG to make the old structure happen, can we just start making invitations? I mean, even, even the, the smaller group one, and the worst they can do is say no, but they say, hey, we're due for our quarterly meeting. We'd love to have you at the BPU at this date.
Okay. I was just going to say.
Key, turn your mic.
I was just going to say, it was frustrating to me to know that we have our meetings twice a month. And the commissioners are like clueless, you know, as to, to what we do. And the question that we felt, that I felt were already answered, you know, had been previously answered within our meetings, you know, if they're more abreast, I think it's more their responsibility to know what we do than it always been responsibility to know what they do. And I thought that, that, that they would be trying to find out. You know, they would be, be making the initiative to meet with us, but I'm, I'm, I just affect a repeat. I think that's right.
Well, and I think that, you know, Bill has attempted multiple times to give sort of a state of the utility to the commissioners. And, you know, that, for whatever reason, has not been able to be scheduled either. So, you know, which might have answered some commissioners, you know, just sort of their generic questions. I understand that they can't, you know, pay attention to our meeting. They have a lot of meetings going on too, you know, probably a little bit more than we do at this point, despite the fact that I feel like we have thirty meetings a month. But, you know, and so, you know, I understand that they can't focus in and drill down on. Now, if they're going to, you know, be the managing board of, of this utility, like some folks are pushing for, they probably, probably need to come to a meeting or two and bone up on it. You know, but until that happens, I guess, you know, the administration's here to offer whatever answers to, to questions they may have. They just got to ask.
So I think the consensus is that we reach out. Okay. And don't wait on them.
Okay. So who's going to initiate the contact?
Well, don't we have to come up with like multiple dates that work for us that we would then perhaps funnel through legal? I don't know how this works. Would it go through Tom directly to? I don't know who.
If you're wanting to send it to the commissioners, then it's best to send it to their staff. They have, they have two assistants that work for them or that, you know, that manage that office. So it's, and they will distribute those. That's, that's the most efficient way to get it to the commissioners.
And they usually meet. Meetings we've always had have been prior to their regular full commission meeting.
The ones where you have met. Yes, like it wouldn't be the full boards meeting. Yes. The other ones were during, usually during the day or afternoon that were the.
Quarterly.
The quarterly.
That we don't have, haven't had for.
Right.
Years. Yeah.
Now, the, there's, they often do have a special session at five o'clock and those are not generally set by the commissioners. Those are set by the mayor. So you might offer, you might want to consider offering some days that aren't Thursdays. And then every other Monday, as you all know, are bad because they have the standing committees.
I mean, it seems like we could invite them at like a Wednesday at seven thirty in the evening, right after we wrap up our meeting and go.
Maybe we have them over for a work session.
Or that, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I really, Mr. Seitz came at either rate hearing or budget. I can't remember, rate hearing. And that's really the first time I've ever seen a commissioner without a planned, you know, to set time.
Well, you know, and it's odd to me, there is a comprehensive cost of service study that is on our website from 2023 that is out there, you know, put together by professionals. And I don't, I mean, people had an opportunity to come and pick through that at that time. And I, I didn't see a lot of that. We had one intervenors, I think we all remember.
How long is the executive session going to last?
They're hope, hoping twenty minutes.
So that means we've got twenty minutes from now.
Yeah.
To get into the.
Right.
Randy.
Randy.
So maybe we can take this up really in a regular session or begin informal outreach and.
Tom, I can either be quiet the rest of the night or talk the rest of the day. Either way.
I like listening to you, Rose.
Excellent. One way or the other.
All or nothing.
Okay, let's go, Raymond.
So if you're, uh, feel a burst star, this is our final budget for much of. I am generally Andrew has taken, taken this presentation in the past and I'm, I'm kind of trying to pick it up. I've did little modifications to it to kind of meet my needs. But he put Moses Deanna before he left. So you know, we're talking about, this presentation is focusing on the ERC and in our, our presentation a couple of weeks ago and the revenue forecast, we talked about PRC. So this is really focusing on that one line on the bill that we see. Aren't the monthly bills and so, so we have a process, Andrew's team or Andrew's former team would work through, they have a planning software, they look at the loads and they look at the generates of each other when they model for next year. So we're trying to look and make some assumptions about what's next year going to look like. There's always market dynamics between, you know, what our generation's doing and what the market's doing. A lot of that's driven by natural gas prices and some other things that occur in the market. But we also have our own generation and, you know, the coal that we have our coal pile that also comes in our fuel burn. So those all go into play and go into this mix. The majority of this presentation is going to kind of focus on purchase power some of it, but I also want to remove the fuel piece of it. Is there two that, and from, when I look at these costs, you know, I always look at them together. And sometimes the fuel cost may be higher than what we budgeted, but generally what that means is our purchase power costs are lower. So there's usually this given flow between purchase power and fuel costs to get back and forth. So we're trying to encapsulate that into some model and put that together. Next slide. So looking at the loads, you know, we, they, I look at the billing side of it. On my side, they look at the load side of it on, on the other side of it. They look at the monthly loads. They make some assumptions based on, they look at hourly. So they build a model based on every hour of the year. And they also consider the, you know, peaks, peaks of the historical peaks that have occurred in the system. So all of that kind of gets molded together, which also rolls into my revenue forecast that I presented a couple of weeks ago. Next slide. So not only the load side, there's the reason, the generation or the resource side. So we look at our plants, the availability of our plants, any scheduled outages. You know, the cost of our generation and any heat rates are, it's one of those of different heat rakers. We also look at our purchase power agreements that we have. We have capacity costs, which are kind of fixed. And there's an energy portion of those contracts. They all flow into the market. There's a, the market pricing, we look at on peak and off peak hours during those, during that year period. And we also look at heating, heating and cooling degrees. Information. And that kind of relates into, really impacts our residential customers, the, the heating loads and the cooling loads kind of impact their, I guess their load curve more than the other classes. Next slide. So the biggest driver in all is natural gas prices. Just, and it's can be a little volatile and generally how we, you know, we project these and usually we're, we're off. So we look at the hub, hundred hub prices, just to look at what the averages have been, just to give you an idea of the volatility. We were two eleven in 2020, you know, almost doubled that in twenty-one and then jumped again in twenty-two. And now we're back down to two fifty in twenty-two and two thirty in, in, in this current year. So you know, I looked at the estimates and Andrew and I did, and we came up with an average of three point one for next year going forward. So that's one of the big major pieces that go into the, the, the pricing and of the fuel and purchase power budget. The integrated market also has a, a role in that. Our Dogwood facility has a role in that. Both of those are, you know, Dogwood's really sensitive to gas prices. We're projecting a little lower consumption out of that unit next year. I think there's some outages, but hopefully maybe because of that, they'll be more in the money on some of the peak pricing times when it can be running. So. And then we also have our renewables, our wind, wind generation and so forth in our portfolio. The wind generation in the state continues to grow, extending in the SVP footprint. Last year in twenty-three, it almost thirty-six point six percent of the generation SVP came from wind. Twenty-seven point two percent from coal. So those are all considerations that we have to look at when we, we take the model in, in, in view. Next slide. So just to give you all graphical of the natural gas prices, because this is really the driver of our budgets, just for we're, it's kind of fluctuating. And we see that spike that we, we all dealt with in January. That was, you know, we had those, that issue that we had when it got really cold. So that's, that, that can happen in, in a, a week's timeframe. So currently we're at like a dollar ninety-four. So historically fairly low gas prices. As of, we sit here today, next slide. Looking at the inventories that are currently in, in, in storage, we're at a five-year highs. The, um, the, I got this from the EIA data. So, you know, all things being equal, if, if we have a normal year and no crazy weather events, you know, this should boom out for, um, gas prices should, should you know, be reasonably conservative and, and lower on the lower end of our assumptions. Next slide. So, you know, just looking at all the components together, we have our energy purchases and our sales. And this, this accounts for the majority of all of our, our, our costs. We have our daily, this includes our daily settlements that come in every day. Those are settled every hour, I believe. Generally, this can be, you know, some of the high volatility happens in this little area. Like I said, this is probably eighty-five percent of the cost right here. The purchase power area. The next bullet there, we have, we have our SPP transmission. This is not our internal transmission within our system. This is, this is transmission cost to get energy to us from, from the grid. Those are settled monthly. And then we have our renewable contracts, which is our wind and hydro that I spoke about earlier. We were anticipating about a four point eight percent increase in some of those costs. We've got some pricing adjustments, inflationary things that are. We've got some pricing adjustments, inflationary things that are occurring on those. Um, some of those have reset, um, some of the contracts have, so they have. And then we have some capacity that we sell back when we have excess during the year. Um, we estimate that to be about six hundred thousand dollars, so that's kind of a negative against our costs, so it helps reduce the ERC. And then we have some recs that we get from our, uh, wind and our, our renewable portfolio that we can, that we sell, we sell on the market. We, those prices have been coming down, we're getting about two fifty per arnim. So we're, we're seeing about one seventy-five to two twenty-five on those recs, we sell them, I think, every quarter. So we're, you know, anticipating about two hundred thousand dollars to come in from those, and like I said, that's a deduct, that's a reduction in the ERC, so that helps lower the cost some. And then there's some other miscellaneous fees associated with the membership of being part of SPP and just with the system and compliance related. So the total purchase power budget is gonna be up approximately ten percent or approximately six point eight million for the year. Now, let me throw the fuel in there, because I mentioned that earlier, because, you know, it's important to look at both sides of that. And the fuel, I'm gonna read these to you. Purchase power last year was fifty-three point one, and this year we're looking at fifty-nine point eight. Our fuel last year was thirty-eight point five, and we're looking at twenty-nine point one. So when you add those two together, we're looking at a, about a million and a half reduction from what we had last year on fuel and purchase power costs. So, you know, I would anticipate one of those being off higher, and the other one should be lower throughout the year, so that's kind of how that offsets. We may be running our generation a little more, depending on what the market, market dictates to us, so, or if, you know, we're, if pricing is soft, we may not be running our generation, and we may be buying it more, so it might be cheaper to purchase it than to ru- run our own generation. So currently, as, you know, this kind of rolls into this revenue forecast that I gave you, you know, a couple of weeks ago, um, when we, we, we add that up, and then any of our excess sales that we have in the market, we're anticipating about seven million dollars of wholesale sales uh, in addition to the cost. That's a deduct, so that reduces the ERC. We're looking at approximately four point three percent, or three point one cents, four point three cents on the ERC for two thousand twenty-five. So, um, it could be a little lower if we have some over collections or under collections throughout the period, so it could go up, but that's kind of the average for, um, what we're putting as our goalpost for the budget, building it based on that. So I hope I did this presentation justice as good as I can, but I'm sure he's probably a little more in depth on some things, so. Thank you, last thing, I know you guys got busy, so.
I have one quick one.
Sure.
The slide on the natural gas underground story, is that like the market, this is how much is out there, or is this a BPU?
That's a market.
Okay.
It rests market.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Is, would there be anything like, once we reach our target of days cash on hand? And then if we continue to collect and we go above that, could we, could we set something and say, okay, if we get so much above, then we can take that money that's above and use it to offset or payoff or use it to reduce the ERC?
Yeah, well, you know, the, the, uh, rates that you approved, I read, it has a, it has a mechanism in it for the building reserves also offset it within the RSC rate structure itself. So, so there's the, there's the, there's the, there's ERC rider, I mean, ERC reserve, uh, and then there is the, basically the operating reserve for everything outside the ERC. Reason, reason why we did that is for our days of cash don't fluctuate. It's not, it's not, it won't fluctuate as much as it, as it has. It's still gonna fluctuate, even though I think you'll see the day that we've set probably the largest peak that I can remember. You know, what I asked Laurie to do is also put in a mean curve, average curve.
I saw that.
Okay, and there's still gonna be volatility, so even though we're at where we are, it's gonna start dropping by us just operating the utility without pulling money out and anything else with it, so. But what the rating agencies are looking for is that hundred twenty-day average across, across the line on, on having observed, not only getting there, but sustaining, uh, that, that reserve once we get there. But, and that's gonna be the challenging part, is, is to, you know, be able to sustain it over a period of time, but at least we're headed in the right direction. And if you pull money out, now you're going backwards and trying to catch back up.
I, I understand. Good question.
Uh, I was just gonna add, there, there are some guardrails in that ERC rider. We added the reserve account to that during the rate hearing, and, and some of that dictates if, if it goes up a, a certain percent above what we anticipate, we can pull some of that back and, and use those funds accordingly. So, but there, there is some of that language in that rider that we, we put in there just for that purpose.
It's, but as you said, the, the concern is, is are we able to sustain it over time? Well, that's the normal, that's, that's what we call our days of cash reserve, yes, to try to build some type of sustainability, getting to a hundred and twenty-day average and sustaining that. Uh, so, I mean, with that, you may, you may have a hundred, you may have a hundred and forty, and it's gonna average at a hundred and twenty, so maybe, you know, that's, that's gonna be the, the challenge for the utility, uh, it's gonna take time, but the cost of service was built with that goal set in mind, is, is to, is to try to get there and, and maintain there. But, you know, that's without pulling it out, I mean, let, let's let the, let's let the ERC reserve operate the way it was designed to operate, and like Randy said, if there's, there's certain conditions that are met, we can also pull money out of that without bothering the days of cash reserve. The, the whole goal was to try to flatten that ERC pricing out by having that in place as well.
It's, it's jumped up considerably the last couple of months. It's not flat.
Yeah. Well, and are we, should be close to but under collecting, or where are we?
Yeah, so, well, I haven't seen the third quarter results yet, but, you know, we had that big, that spike I showed you in the graph. We, we had a big under collection from January, from the first quarter of this year that we were trying, that we had to get caught up on. That really didn't get caught up until the third quarter of this year, so that's really some of the reason why that ERC is hot, because of that, that peak that we seen on that graph, when we had, um, pricing was high and our generation wasn't hitting where it needed to at that time, so.
Tom, final thing, uh, before we go into exec, uh, uh, you know, when we do satisfy where we need to be, once we've, we've settled that under collection, if we ever over collect, then we're now refunding that back, so that'll, that'll turn around and lower it, so that's already built in. Plus, so you got that, plus you got the reserve, too. Uh, that's all of our presentations, uh, for the day. If, uh, President, if you want to go into executive session, I'll trade back to you.
Okay, at this time, I think we're, uh, scheduled to move into executive session. Could I have the motion?
The proposed motion for adoption is as follows. I move that the board go into executive session, first floor conference, conference room to discuss confidential matters related to the general manager, sir, personal matter of non-elected personnel, as justified under the Open Meetings Act, and the general manager, Bill Johnson, HR director, Dennis Dumovich, acting chief counsel, Angela Lawson, and consultant Rohan Pittiparty be present to participate in the discussion that we reconvene in open session at, five fifty-nine in the, um, in the first floor conference room to either, or to adjourn. So moves.
Okay.
It's been moved and, and seconded. Roll call.
Roll call, Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries, we will now be into executive session.
Okay, at this time, we're coming out of executive session, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
I move, we adjourn.
Rose, I second.
Okay, it's been moved and sent. A roll call, please.
Roll call, Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
No.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.